Tonight's joint workshop to order. And Karen, can we just have you note the attendance for the record?
Sure.
If I've been doing an official roll. Tonight's agenda, so, welcome everyone. It's just great, great to see everybody. And tonight's agenda is listed as a special meeting, which is kind of a requirement because we are off-cycle of our typical city council and EDA schedule. But just of note, tonight is a working session. Tonight is intended to be very educational. It's intended to be a conversation. It is, we're always in this formal structure, cameras on, mics on. But it is intended to be a workshop and a working session. And so, the informa, we are all here tonight to learn and to have information presented. And so, as you have questions along the way, feel free to ask. This will be very informal. And again, despite the formal setting, we want it to be as informal as possible. Anything that we discuss tonight that will require official action on either the part of council or EDA would come back to us in an official meeting for an official vote. Tonight is just a working session. And also, the time for you to ask questions, maybe express opinions if you were so inclined, and also know that nothing tonight is binding. And so, if you, I always say tomorrow, we are all smarter. And so, if you learn something along the way and change your mind, that is, that is okay. Again, I can stress this enough, it is just a working session. So with that, I'd invite everyone to rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have an agenda for this evening, and I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Show move.
A second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Or aye, oppose, and our agenda's approved. Our next item is, and our primary topic for tonight, is a public financial assistance discussion. And Patrick, are you kicking us off?
Yeah, I will kick you off real quick. And Madam Mayor, and City Council, and members of the EDA with us tonight are two pe, two of the firms that represent us when we're doing public financing. The first is Ellers, represented by Rebecca Kurtz. And our attorneys when it comes to public financing, Kennedy and Graven, represented by Jenny Bolton. They will go through some of the ways we can publicly finance development, give you some background on TIFs and assistance and all those things. So, for me, lack of other words, I will hand it over to them.
Excellent. Welcome. We're glad you're here. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, EDA. I am Jason Arsvold with Ellers, and worked with Rebecca to put this information together tonight. She's a little under the weather, so I'm going to take the majority of the speaking role here and go through the presentation that we have prepared. So, I think what we wanted to cover, and from what we understood, you know, you all wanted to accomplish, was just go through a little bit about some of the plans and policies that you want to think about having in place before you start down the road of providing public assistance. Talk about how to protect your resources in that process to make sure that you're, you know, getting the best deal for you and ta, and your taxpayers. You know, making sure that, we talk a little bit about the process for that review and what that looks like. I've got a couple local examples of projects that have followed, you know, this kind of best practices process, and so you can see how that worked in action. So we'll talk a little bit about those. And then, at the end, you know, one of the things that we talked about as an outcome was to revise, you know, your own policies and guidance around providing public assistance. And so, what we were hoping to do is to have some time to get some feedback from you all about the kinds of things that you might like to see in those policies as they get revised and established. So as always, certainly if there's questions along the way, stop me. I'm happy to stop and clarify. And, you know, likewise for anybody else here in the audience. So, when we start talking about providing financial assistance, I think one of the first questions is why are we even, why would we ever even consider that? And the way that we tend to think about it is that if you're, if you're thinking about providing financial assistance, or you think that there's a need to provide financial assistance, it's typically because there's some kind of financial barrier that's preventing the private marketplace from developing a site, for example, in accordance with your city vision, right? And so, there's a whole list of things here that, that are examples of that, but that's typically fundamentally what's happening. You know, and it may not, you know, we've got things on here like contamination, you know, high fees, market rents too low, infrastructure costs, you know, cheaper alternatives. Sometimes your city vision is just incompatible with the market. You might want to see, you know, a building with a certain architectural characteristics, and the market can't support that. You have a way to use your tools just to make that happen. So there's just lots of reasons. Not all of them are listed here, but, but basically, that's why you're getting involved, to help, to help an outcome in the city. And before you go down that path, we always just advise that it's good to have a plan in place. You know, economic development or redevelopment plan, I think that's really important. That's what's helping to unite staff and all the policymakers and elected officials and the community around what the goals are. It's going to be your foundation for success. Just make sure that you're prepared when, when opportunity knocks. And I think what's most important is that you're setting your priorities because you have limited resources, both in terms of time and money. And so, if you're out there doing things that aren't leading you towards your vision, you're, you're not, you know, getting the best bang for your buck. Now, you have a lot of these plans in place, you have a nice downtown plan in place, those are the kind of things I'm talking about. You know what it is you want to see, you know what you want to see happen. It's just a lot more helpful in the process to have thought through that ahead of time. And then, once you've got that, those plans in place, one of the next steps is to make sure you've got policies that are setting the parameters for your involvement in any kind of public assistance. One of the ones that we talk about most frequently is business subsidy policy, and I'm going to spend a little more time talking about what that is. And it's one of those that's required by statute when you're going to provide financial assistance. And, you know, with that, what we often see is you include additional local goals. So if there are things you want to accomplish as a community, in addition to what's required by statute to be in there, you can add your own additional goals to that. We will often see, and this starts to set the stage for your process, right? So you've got your plans, now you've got policies that are guiding how you're going to engage around discussions for public financing. And one of the, one of the big ones is a developer fee policy, which, which says that, you know, if a developer's going to be asking you for assistance, they're going to submit a fee to cover their costs that you might have in terms of reviewing and executing that, that request. You have an applica, an application for assistance that, again, becomes part of your process. So if you have somebody knocking on your door asking you for something, you can give them an application to let them know exactly the kind of information you're going to need to evaluate that request. And, and those are the things that are really, as I said, just setting up your process. And I think that's what's most important here. The policies, you know, are important, they provide guidance, the plans are important. But when it comes down to actually providing assistance, having a process in place is what's going to help make it successful. And we'll spend a little more time talking about that. So, why do we need to have this business subsidy policy that we're, we're kind of here to talk about? One, it's required by state statute, right? And you, so, you need to, at minimum, put items in your policy that make sure that you're compliant with what the state statute requires, which frankly, isn't very onerous and not, you know, too, too detailed what you need to do in order to just to meet that. So, I think what the, where the value is, is adding those extra goals and process-type things in there to help, you know, understand where those are going to be beneficial and how they're going to help you as a city. So, you know, you're going to indicate in the types of projects that you, you know, the EDA and other bodies want to assist, you know, that's going to provide your staff with the direction about where to spend their time, right? If, if, like I said, this gets back to prioritizing your resources. If staff doesn't have a clear, you know, guidance about what they're supposed to be working on, then they can be wasting time and, and money doing something that you don't want to see happen or doesn't get you towards your goal. So, that's important. It allows staff to weed out projects that aren't meeting those goals. We, you know, we see staff spend a lot of time, you know, reacting and responding to people that are asking them for assistance and dollars that, one, aren't maybe very serious, and two, want to do things that aren't consistent with your goals. This just helps, you know, kind of cut through all of that and spend your time doing the things you want to see done. And then, if, you know, if there are projects that, you know, you look at your policies and they come in the door, and, you know, we aren't quite sure, there may be a little borderline, you know, you still can, those are things that you come to you all to talk about, to see if you want to have further discussions about those. One of the other benefits here is that your, this, this document, your business subsidy policy or your policies will be your thing to communicate to the development community, what it is you want to see happen in your city, and so that they can get a sense about what you will and won't support. And if there are things in there you simply aren't willing to use public money for, you can say that. And it's very clear then to the development community, no, we're not going to provide public assistance for that. Or, you know, we might provide it under these circumstances. So that's, that's helpful. I, I go back to the review process, this policy becomes really that cornerstone for that review process. So it's going to be the guiding document to help you, you know, evaluate those requests and look at those, you know, applications that come into you for assistance. They're, having that in place, those policies, that application process, it ensures that you're, you're putting consistency into your process and equity into your process. So everybody that comes through the door is going to be treated exactly the same, their project is going to be evaluated under the same criteria, and, and nobody's going to be treated any differently in that process. And so, I think that's important for a lot of different reasons. It's helpful for staff and to understand, you know, how to react to folks coming in, and it's helpful for you to know that your staff is treating everybody exactly the same when they're coming in asking for assistance. You know, one of the things we often hear about, there's a lot of, kind of sometimes, you know, anima, or just more concern, I'll say, about providing assistance. And there's this feeling that sometimes that if, if you provide assistance over here in a certain amount, it's going to set a precedent, and now everybody's going to want that same level of assistance. And I think what's helpful about this is, is if you have this process in place and these policies, I think it's important to remember that every project gets evaluated on its own merits. And that's very clear through the policy. So, just because Project A received X doesn't mean that Project B is going to receive the same thing. Project B is going to be reviewed, looked at on its own merits, and it'll get what it may or may not need. And so, it's important to have that, and I think helps address concerns that I know a lot of, you know, councils and EDAs have when they're looking at projects. So you've got plans in place, you've got policies out there to guide this, an application and a process, you know, these are all things you already have, but the discussion here is just what can be done to, you know, streamline and maybe enhance that process. And so, it's not like we're starting from scratch, you know, you, you have experience doing a lot of this. But once those things are together, and once you've got, you know, your process set, you may get people coming in asking you for assistance. And, you know, in that process, as I mentioned, it's important to think about how you're going to best protect the city's resources in that engagement with, with a potential developer, I'll use for an example. You know, what, what we often talk about is once that application comes in, it needs to be reviewed. And not just, you know, at a very high level and a lot of, it needs to be reviewed in a lot of detail. One, for consistency with your policies, right? Does it meet the policies that you've laid out? But two, you know, if they're asking you for a million dollars, it's important to understand, do they really need a million dollars? And so, that process involves what we call a pro forma analysis, which is really, just simply put, looking at a developer's numbers, for example, and analyzing that and understanding is what they're asking for truly what they need, or is the need something less, or is there no need at all? And the case studies that I have that I'll talk about go through an example of how that works in practice, so you can see that. But that's really what, what you're, you're trying to do in terms of protecting those resources. And then, from there, it's just making sure that you're matching up the right, you know, public resource option, right? Whether that be tax increment financing, tax abatement, grants, you know, going through that list and making sure that you're doing that in a way that's also protecting the city. We often talk about making sure that, you know, you're, you're going to provide assistance to developers in what we call a pay-as-you-go format, meaning you're not providing money upfront to them, you're, you're providing a commitment to provide TIF, for example, over a period of time, that's pay-as-you-go. You know, they receive the money that they pay out in taxes back. It puts this, puts less risk on the city side. We want to see that they're maximizing all their private sources, you know, that they're getting as much mortgage financing as they can, that they're bringing enough equity to the project, and then minimizing what the public assistance is that's necessary to actually get the project done. So that's really the fundamental exercise. We kind of talk about that sometimes, you hear the term "but-for" test. So we're, what that means is that the project would not move forward but for the assistance that the city is providing. And when we talk about that in the context of tax increment financing, that's a, a finding that you need to make according to the statute. So every time you approve a, a TIF plan and a TIF agreement, you're finding that, that project, when you pass your resolutions approving the TIF plan, for example, that that project wouldn't happen but for the tax increment assistance that it's providing. And, and, you know, we can really, you know, substantiate that with that pro forma analysis that I talked about. You can really, you know, determine, yes, this is what, what the project needs. And, and while that test doesn't apply in statute to other forms of assistance outside a TIF, we generally say you should apply that standard broadly, no matter what type of assistance. And so, a lot of these policies that are put in place really require a project to follow that whole scrutiny, even if it's not a TIF project, for example.
Could we, um, I just want to pause there, because I've always associated that standard just with TIF, and it's, it's required, but just want to pause, because that's a new point for me, is that, that that would be a recommended standard for all, any subsidy that might be considered as part of a project? That's, that's interesting and helpful, that's why you're here.
Yeah, well, that, I mean, so we, yes, I mean, it is, it is important, I know it's not, you know, a statutory requirement, but absolutely a best practice, even, even to the extent of, you know, somebody coming in and asking for a reduction in fees, for example. I mean, that, that should follow that same scrutiny. You know, a grant, land write-down, you know, anything like that, all of that really, in our view, should be looked at to make sure that, you know, that what's being provided is, is correct.
The evalu, so, it's a challenging standard, right? Or it's a challenging evaluation, because part of the, part of that is some level of recognition of what a project's, you say capital might be, or what, you know, every, everyone's got a different cost standard or a different, different level of, you know, even just implied profit, right? So it's challenging, it's a challenging standard. It's easy to just say "but-for," but the actual kind of detail of that. How, maybe just some additional guidance on the role of that evaluation and how that, how that evaluation rolls through the staff level to the EDA level to ultimately a council level, like, could you just walk us through, maybe it's later in your presentation as well?
Yeah.
Just who's doing what in that evaluation?
Yeah.
And just what are we looking for? And I think it's something that makes me nervous as mayor, I'm sure it makes council members nervous, EDA members nervous, so just, what's the role and how into the detail are we to make that evaluation?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. So, you know, you'll get your, typically what happens is an application comes in, there have been probably discussions leading up to this, but the applica, the formal application comes to the staff, and it'll have the request outlined in it, and then the developers will have submitted all of the financial detail that's necessary to make the analysis and do the work that would need to be done to ultimately bring something forward to you for your consideration. So from there, often what happens, and, and the nice thing about, you know, doing this, you know, in the kind of way I described, is that what'll come along with that application is a check from the developer. And you will use those funds to help pay for conducting that more detailed analysis and putting together any legal requirements that are necessary. So between, for example, Ellers and Kennedy and Graven, there might be some work to get to, you know, an initial request for assistance that would involve going through, we go through a detailed, you know, like I said, analysis, I mean, it's spreadsheets and, and numbers and calculating down to what returns on investment to the developer are going to be. And we take on that role, you know, staff is working to really quarterback the whole thing. What, that ends up coming forward to you sometimes, I don't know what your typical process has been here, but, you know, you, there may be an initial, what we call like a term sheet, which is an outline of what the proposed terms of public assistance could be. And that would be something that you would all see at the EDA and/or city council level. And that would be the details that would ultimately form the basis for a formal agreement. But oftentimes accompanied with that would be, can be, an analysis, a summary of what the analysis we had done looks like, to say that, you know, if they're asking for a million dollars, you know, we looked at it, and a million dollars would maybe be, lead to returns on investment that are higher than what are typical in the marketplace. And so, we would say that we're recommending like $800,000, because that puts them in line with market rate returns on investment. That all can be documented and summarized in a memorandum. So you've got some assurance that, yes, there's been an analysis, yes, what we're providing isn't exceeding any normal return on investment thresholds. And then, that could move to a formal TIF district, TIF agreement, for example, if it's a TIF project, and then you would see all that come back in an agreement and in a district. All of that, of course, is done on projections, to your point. And, and so, the analysis is one thing, and it's valuable as a tool, but really, what ends up happening because of those differences in developers and their ability to access capital and how they operate and all of those factors, it ends up sometimes also being a negotiation. And so, you know, we've got some numbers to, to show kind of basic parameters, but sometimes, you know, there's negotiation that happens too. And again, all this is based on projections. So, you know, there's, there's also the possibility that once we get into the project, things change. And so, sometimes agreements will also have provisions in them where we're looking back once it's built to say, did it cost what you said? Is your return on investment what you thought it was going to be? And if it's more, then we have an opportunity to reduce our assistance. So there's another level of potential, you know, way to mitigate the risk about being outside of those parameters. Does that make sense?
Yep.
And that is spelled out, apparently.
Say that multiple.
I mean, that is spelled out within any kind of an agreement, right? I mean, as far as, if, if their return on investment was higher, that is spelled out in the agreement that we can renegotiate?
In, in many agreements, not all agreements. But certainly, you know, if that's, if that was something that was of concern to you and you wanted to see, then you could say in your policy, we are, we will require the look-back provisions. And that, and frankly, that's, that's hel, again, it gets back to, it's helpful to, developers do not love those provisions, I'll just say that, you know, and it's for obvious reasons, right? I mean, nobody's shocked to hear that. But I think it's helpful when that's actually, if that's a desire, to state that in your policy. And these are the kinds of things we want to talk about at the end. Because, you know, when your staff is negotiating and, and us potentially, and Jenny with her firm, negotiating with these folks about these agreements, you know, it's real easy to point to the policy and say, hey, look, the council, you're not going to get a deal done here without a look-back provision. And, you know, we'll spend, you know, a lot of time arguing about whether or not we have one of these with developers. If it's, if it's, you know, cut and dried and in the policy, there's not going to be a lot of discussion.
How common are those look-back analysis, or are those look-back agreements?
They're fairly common. There are some cities that just require them as a matter of course. There are some cities that simply just don't like dealing with them, they don't like to think about having to, you know, I don't want to have to administer that, you know, three years from now or four years from now. But I would say, I don't know, half of the agreements, Jenny?
Yeah, I'd say about, about half.
Yeah, have them in there. And I think, too, they're becoming more and more common, and I would, we've done a lot of work with Jenny's firm to even try to refine them, because they are administratively kind of cumbersome at the backend, and, and there have been a lot of, you know, how you use the language, room for arguments and, and all of those things. But I think we're getting better at it, and I think it's becoming more common now with a lot of new agreements, so.
Now, to your, I think you said this, to your point, that potentially is a much less attraction for that developer, right? They are, they have execution risk, or they have some, they're taking on some risk that, or some more uncertainty with that agreement, weren't there?
They are, they are, and it is an important point. I, I would say that, you know, if the, the areas, the times where we've had pushed back to the point of them just being unwilling to accept that kind of a provision, if, if you get to that point, I, usually that's a red flag about them as a partner in a public-private partnership. That's just kind of my feeling about it. Most of the good developers we work with that understand what it means to enter into a public-private partnership with a city or, you know, a public entity, have no problem with including a look-back provision and being completely open book about what their returns on investment are. And so, if they're not, you know, you might want to ask why you're partnering with that group.
So do you either have a look-back or not have it? I mean, there's only, because you couldn't do it on a case-by-case, and you're one person, you say, yeah, we're going to do a look-back, and then four different projects down the road, you decide that, well, they're not going to do the development if we don't give them, if we get rid of that. I mean, you pretty much either have to set a policy that says you're going to do them, or you're not going to do them, or you're going to have some problems, because people are going to say, why did you do it for us, and so on and so forth?
Yeah, I would agree. And that gets, that gets back to that consistency thing, right? I mean, you want to treat everybody the same.
Right.
And so, if, if it is, you know, that's a provision, for example, that you think you do like and want to have, I would agree, it should go in your policy, you should do it every time. And, you know, if it's scaring away develop, it shouldn't, I've never seen it scare away a developer, right? I mean, you can put a threshold in there that's, you know, high enough that they have comfort, that they have some potential for upside. Typically, the way they're structured too, and this isn't always the way they're structured, but, you know, if there is a reduction, like, like, let's say they, let's just for simplicity's sake, say they made 500,000 more than they, they should have. Typically, what happens then is 250 of that goes to reduction of the city assistance, and 250 is, you know, theirs to keep. It's kind of a split, right? Because, you know, it's reasonable to provide for some degree of upside for them as long as you're making sure that you have an opportunity to reduce your assistance as well. So it's not as if they're being totally, you know, burdened by this provision. And in fact, you know, in today's market, obviously, costs, interest rates, you know, it's, and, and not only that, but it's really difficult for developers even to actually get money. Like, you know, for, for a big expensive project, they don't just write a check for their equity, they're going out to institutions and actually raising that equity and raising that debt. And that's harder today, right now, than it was a year ago, to actually get people to give you that money, because they can just, you know, go buy a municipal bond for 5% and, and earn that rate of return rather than the six and a half they were going to get doing an apartment project, for example. So, so there's been a lot higher degree of scrutiny. We're reworking one big deal right now, in the middle of that, and because of the added assistance that they're asking for to, you know, accommodate all these changes in the marketplace, we're adding a look-back. And they've accepted that, even though they're, they're still trying to work at, trying to get these groups to give them money. So, all that is just to say that even in a very difficult environment, those provisions aren't preventing necessarily projects from getting done. Other questions before we?
Question. Is there certain requirements before getting to this state of the application and everything in terms of the financing from other institutions, or maybe even grants, and things that they should have, you know, done their research and applied for, and, before getting to this stage, that?
Yes.
For checks and balances?
Yeah, the simple answer is yes. I mean, I, I often, when the application comes in to you, as I said, it won't be the first time your staff, or maybe even you all, have seen the project, you know, and somebody's been kicking this idea around for a while, and, you know, your staff may have directed them to a particular grant source. These application, grant, typical grant application cycles, you know, go once a year, twice a year, you know, so they got to kind of hit that timeframe right. And so, you know, so yes, it's, there are sometimes those are in there. Sometimes they'll assume that they're going to maybe be able to get some grant money. But as I said, what we, what your staff will do and we would do is if they come in saying, hey, we got this project, well, okay, that's fine, we may be able to help, but first, you know, you need to go explore your other options for money. And so, you, I mean, you would hope that that would happen. But it's, everyone's a little different, you know, they're all unique, and you just don't quite know, you know, housing, like a, like a affordable housing project has a whole different, you know, set of circumstances attached to it than a greenfield industrial development. And so, it just depends on the project type. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, thank you.
Great, yeah.
Is this a secured debt or unsecured debt for the city?
Well, in the, in the examples that, well, the typical assistance would be, wouldn't be debt at all. I mean, there's a, there's a note that, you know, it's technically a, I guess, debt, I guess you'd call it debt, but it's not payable from any other source than the, in a TIF deal, the tax increment that's coming from the tax increment district. So, you're not securing it with, with anything if you issue a note like that. Is that what you're talking about?
So if they get a tax relief of a certain amount of dollars, and they go under, there's no way to recoup that unpaid tax, then?
Well, yeah, right. So what would happen is that, uh, what, so you, if you make a deal and say you're gonna give a project a million dollars, uh, you're gonna, you're gonna give a, a note to the developer that says, we agree to pay you a million dollars. But we're only gonna pay you from the increment that comes from your project, okay? So you're not going out of pocket. If, if the, the developer opens its business, pays its taxes, just like it normally would, those, if it's in a tax increment district, get d- diverted to the city, you can then use those to pay that note. If something happens to the project, uh, and it means that increment no longer comes in, you are not paying, um, anything more out on that note. And it's the developers, the developer had to raise that million dollars on its own, you didn't give them that million dollars. So they're the ones that are on the hook for the fact that you're no longer gonna be paying them out on that increment. So when I talk about pays you go, that's the scenario that represents the least amount of risk for the city in a tax increment deal. The developer has to get its own upfront money. You only pay them back if the increment comes in. If their project fails, usually what happens, and you know, it's really kind of a Jenny question, but they'd be like in default of your agreement, meaning that you don't have to pay them anymore. Like, like if they close their business or they move out of town or, you know, whatever the case may be, you're not obligated to pay them. Now that somebody probably supposed to pay the taxes on that building, you know, and, and tax increment may still be collected, but you wouldn't have to pay it to the developer. If something happens that interrupts the tax payments and there aren't any, you know, TIF collections, that's fine too, you're also not obligated to pay them anything.
Okay, then just, this is a stupid question, but I don't know.
These aren't stupid questions, these are very common, good questions, yeah.
There was the building in Wyoming on the freeway that's now part of Rosenbauer. That was empty for a number of years. If that had had TIF financing on it and a bank got it back, um, the city is no longer honoring any TIF. It gets bought by Rosenbauer. Nothing is a carryover, it's a new deal if Rosenbauer wins something, is that correct?
Probably, I don't know all the details of that, but that's probably what happened. Yeah, yeah, I mean, usually if that, like, say the company left in the middle of the night, it was in default of your agreement, you quit paying, right? You know, um, sometimes in a lease situation, you, you may pay a developer to build an industrial building that they in turn lease to a business. And then the business has nothing to do with the TIF. And so if the, um, building owner still pays its taxes, uh, it may be that it's not in default and you're still paying out TIF. And then a new tenant comes in. But I don't know if that's an owner occupant.
If the bank owned the building, they could still put the TIF if the building is empty?
If, I mean, they were in default, right?
These are all kinda concepts that would be, um, incorporated into a TIF agreement typically. And so what Jason's getting at is there, there are a number of ways in which the business that's the party to the agreement um, could, could be in default. And one of those defaults is bankruptcy, um, or failure to pay taxes or ceasing operations. So your agreement might say, if any of those things happen, we're, we, we can give you notice and stop making TIF payments. What Jason was also describing is a situation where you've got a landlord, they build a building, and your deal is with that, um, developer that built the building. They did what they were supposed to do, they built the building. And even if it's vacant for a while, the, the thought is somebody's paying the taxes and they incurred the costs and it's gonna get occupied in the future. So you might do your deal so that it, it says, you would continue making the payments and the TIF could be assigned to whoever's next. But we've also done some of, some of those spec buildings to say, you, you know, you, the developer, even if you build that building, that's not enough. We'll only pay you if there is somebody operating it. So that really gets incorporated into the business deal that's in the agreement. Um, so it, it really just depends on what you want out of that, um.
Yeah, we want the employees in there and paying taxes and, and product and, okay, thank you.
But in any case, no matter what happens, you're not on the hook for, you know, um, making up any shortfalls that result as, as anything that happens with that business, right? I mean, that's the whole point of a pays you go, it's, they finance it, they take their risk. If the money isn't there, it's not there. And any of these things like Jenny described could happen and it just depends on the facts and circumstances of the.
Okay, thank you. To that point and to Jenny's point, um, those details around the different scenarios and what would happen, those are individually negotiated as part of each TIF project 'cause I could imagine the city's appetite might be different based on the nature of the project, the parties involved, right?
That's right, yes. And even, even down to, you know, they're different based on the kind of TIF district that they're in. You know, there, there's requirements that, that need to be adhered to, you know, um, you know, to Jenny's point about, I mean, if, if it's in an economic development district, that building, for example, it has to be, you know, certain eligible uses, you know, couldn't, you couldn't just have a, you know, a, um, an office building move in there or, uh, uh, what's more common is like a sports academy or something move into these things, they can't, that can't be, right? So we, we, the agreements have to say those things can't be. Housing, it's gotta be income qualified, you know, so there's just some things that even based on the type of district that are gonna be different per every deal, yeah.
Great question.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna just be real brief about some of the local financial tools. I, I understand that you've had some background on a lot of this stuff and, uh, I don't wanna belabor the point, but, uh, just, you know, uh, this is not a, a totally comprehensive list, but this is what's most commonly, EDAs in cities, this kind of list here are the, some of the bigger, most common ones, right? You've got the potential EDA and, and an HRE levy potentially, uh, that you can use, uh, to ra- it's a tax, right? But you're raising that for, uh, EDA and, and housing activities. Uh, you can use those dollars to create like a local revolving loan fund or create a lo- revolving loan fund from money that you may have gotten from a past grant project. Uh, tax increment financing, tax abatement, those are really, you know, they're the most common, right? They're, they're bulk of what you're probably gonna be working in. And then you really got state, local resources, uh, you know, the state common ones here are gonna be like Department of Employment, Economic Development, potentially Minnesota Housing, but, you know, those are, and, and maybe others. But those are really the big, the big tools that are out there. And it's just, you know, uh, important to understand which ones are gonna match up with which project and, and keeping that in mind. You know, uh, when we talk about how they get used, uh, you know, there are different ways, we've talked about some of that already. Uh, but, you know, we're, we're often using TIF, abatement or those other resources to assist developers. And we might do that in that pays you go manner that, that we were talking about, right? That's commonly how that would, would happen. Um, and, but it doesn't have to be that way. Uh, you can also leverage, uh, you know, the, the increment that's being, uh, generated for other things in the city, right? You can, you can leverage it for, uh, public infrastructure. And you can do that directly, you know, for, you know, project costs of infrastructure that are in a TIF district, for example. Or indirectly, you know, you can provide assistance to a developer for, you know, some qualifying activity in its project if it's required, for example, to build a piece of infrastructure to its site. And that, in that indirect way, you can get infrastructure built, uh, through a TIF project. So there's, that's another way to do it. Um, you know, some cities will use tax increment to undertake redevelopment. They might, for example, front the cost of acquisition and demolition of a, of a building and then, uh, create a district when a project comes in and then use that increment to pay yourself back, right? If you've got a, a fund that can, can support that kind of investment in your city. So we see it happening that way too. So it isn't just about, and, and this policy isn't just about really, you know, how you give money to developers, it's about how you wanna use your public resources broadly, if that makes sense. I'm gonna talk a little bit about tax increment financing as, as the only one of those detail, the, um, financing pieces that I'll go into a little bit of detail about. I know you've had a little bit of background on this from talking with staff, but I'm just gonna do the very, you know, uh, thirty thousand foot view of this, just so everyone kind of understands what it is. And so basically, kind of the, the verbal definition of it is, you know, you've got this ability to capture and use most of the increased local property tax revenues from a new development within a defined geographic area for a defined period of time without needing the approval of those other taxing jurisdictions. So, you know, you're, you're, you have a parcel with, with, uh, something on it today, uh, and some value in taxes that it's paying. When something new gets built, you get to capture that new value. And this is kind of what it looks like visually for, for people that, you know, kinda like to see things more visually. The blue bar there is, you know, that base parcel. It's paying taxes today to all the different jurisdictions. It's gonna always continue to do that. But if you create a district and then build something, there's gonna be new value that happens over time, over and above that existing base value. That's that, what's represented in that purple, uh, piece of the chart there. And that's what you capture in your tax increment district and can divert to a developer in that pays you go format or pay for infrastructure or whatever it is you wanna do for that period of time. And then when the district ends, all of that value and tax base is there then for the city to use when it's budgeting and, you know, uh, um, for tax relief and those sorts of things. That's the whole goal of, of doing projects like this is at the end of the day, you've got more tax base there than you had when you started. And that's really one of the big goals.
One of the questions that comes up all the time on this topic is, it's all tax jurisdictions? And so i- is it, is, is it truly all sta- it is state, county, school board? I'm, I, I, I mean, e- everybody that is part of the property tax or what, what is included in that?
Yeah, it's a good.
We hear feedback from school districts, for example, on, you know, these things, these decisions have impact to them and helpful to understand when we make these decisions, who else is impacted?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, just to, and, just to start by answering that, I wanted to start by saying that, you know, there's, you, you often see, people see these dollars captured in these districts and then they say, you know, um, well, those are, those are tax dollars that we would've had, you know, as, as the county or whatever. And they, that's not the case if, if the but-for test
Correct.
has been met, right? So if you've, if, if the project would not have existed but for the assistance it's getting, those taxes would never have existed. So that's the answer to part of that. Now, who's captured in there? It's, it's city, county, school, uh, and then the other small taxing jurisdictions, like, you know, mosquito control district and, and, you know, uh, watershed and whatever else, right? That's in that small, it does not include, um, um, taxes on, on, um, market value referendum, you know, taxes on, um, uh, you know, like, um, uh, that's what I'm looking for. Vote, ref- yeah, the referendum, you know, those taxes aren't captured in a district. Uh, there's a, there's a state general tax that the, um, that the commercial properties pay. Uh, that is not captured in, um, in the districts. Uh, but yeah, all those other small, um, and the base value taxes, those are not captured in the district. Um, so, and, and you can decide, but typically we say, any fiscal disparities taxes are also not captured in a TIF district. So, so, so what ha- so what happens is for commercial property, you might see, uh, if, if it pays a hundred dollars in taxes, uh, thirty-five cents, thirty-five dollars of that might be captured in a district because of those, the state general tax, fiscal disparities. Housing is different. Uh, housing, you might see, uh, more like eighty cents on the dollar for, for housing districts because they don't have fiscal disparities, there isn't, um, you know, a state general tax for housing. So, what's one of the reasons why housing tends to be the, uh, economic driver of a lot of redevelopment that happens? 'Cause it can generate more and pay for more offsetting of redevelopment costs.
Your, your other point though is really well made and just to reiterate, uh, 'cause I forget about this as well, is if you, if the but-for test has been met, it wouldn't have, it's not like you're taking money away. That is a, something to keep in mind with that.
Yeah, correct. And in fact, I mean, you've done the work to help build the tax base for those entities into the future, right? Uh, and that's, that's the other thing that's happening there. And, and I should say too, that, you know, school districts aren't harmed in any of this either, right? I mean, their funding is formula-based and so even if that tax, you know, even if that project was there, it doesn't mean the school gets more money, right? It, it, it's, it affects their rate, but it doesn't, um, it doesn't r- result in any more dollars for them. And they don't lose any dollars in this process because everything stays, you know, just as it was. So, um, those, I think those two things are important as you're, you know, dealing with constituents and your other elected, uh, officials. Uh, then just lastly about TIF here, you, you can't, obviously you just can't create a TIF district for any reason, right? You have to have a, uh, there's types of districts in statute and you have to meet a requirement to create any one of these districts. There are different types. If you're trying to do, you know, redevelopment, there's a redevelopment district and a renewal and renovation district. Those, and those have to, you know, you have to make certain findings to create those, which I don't need to go into here unless you really want to. Uh, affordable housing, if you wanna do affordable housing, there's a housing district. Uh, the, the qualification there is that the housing in that district needs to meet income, uh, qualifications. And then, uh, if you're just looking at like kinda greenfield land and looking to do like job and tax-based growth, there are economic development districts. And those you can do on a greenfield site as long as you're doing it really for like a manufacturing or typical industrial type use is really what those are for. Uh, can't do it for like, you know, um, in, in most cases for retail, for example, or, or office buildings or, uh, other types of, you know, uses, it has to be one of those specific types of uses. Not on this list is a soils district, so you can create a soils district to help clean up contaminated land. That's the other thing you can do with TIF. All right, uh, so the next, there's some project examples, how this works in practice. Are there any, any questions before I jump into those from anyone? All right. So the first one was from the city of Burnsville. Uh, you know, Burnsville, uh, right before this project came to them, went through a process kinda like we're doing here. Uh, what, uh, they put in place some, some economic development strategic plan. Uh, they revisited their business subsidy policy and rewrote all of that, uh, to better fit what they wanted to see happen in the community. And went and, and finalized all of that and then had a few projects come through that went just, you know, kinda exactly like you'd want it to happen, textbook, uh, example of how it can be effective when you've got all those things working together. So, you know, they came in with this project, uh, it was a, a, you know, industrial, two-building industrial, uh, project, uh, you know, just over two hundred and thirty thousand square feet. But the problem was this had been a site in the city that had both contamination and, uh, structurally poor soils. And so nothing was built. Again, it goes back to that, you know, the financial barriers. Why are we providing assistance? This site wasn't getting built because of, you know, that contamination and the fact that the soils weren't good enough to build on it. So it sat there and not surprising. The developer came in, was able to quantify the cost of fixing all of that. It was gonna be about three and a half million dollars and, uh, and with a project that was gonna be about twenty-seven million, uh, dollars to build. And so what the developer wanted to do is go come through the city's process and request financial assistance. And so they, you know, they've been meeting with the city, uh, talking about what their needs were gonna look like, made an application and started that conversation about actually providing, uh, public assistance. So that started by taking a look at that application, just like I said, right? That, that, um, we were involved in that and so, and the staff, uh, took that and analyzed their numbers. You know, we, we got, um, uh, contractors provided that estimates about what the cleanup costs were going to be, so we could substantiate that. Uh, looked at what their, you know, um, return on investment was gonna be. This was happened to be in an existing tax increment district. And so we ran the numbers about how much, again, knowing what resources you have, this is, this was an example of why this was important. We, we couldn't generate enough in the district to overcome the three and a half million dollars. So, you know, to the earlier discussion, it was, there's this need then to go find other money. And we knew that, right? We, 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 we had one point seven, I think it was, I don't have the number in here exactly. We needed to find, make up the rest of that somewhere else. And so there was a concerted effort then on the part of the staff and the developer to go find that extra money from, uh, the agencies that had it available. So that, that came through as well, uh, and so tried to cobble together enough to get that, uh, to happen. This is an example of the, of what the financials, just at a very high level, looked like for the project. So, um, you, you can, we, we, we ran this analysis and went through and said, okay, well, can, just because there's three and a half million dollars of extraordinary cost, doesn't mean that the project maybe can't support some of that, right? So, you know, it, it's not like, uh, um, you have to solve for necessarily every time for all of those extraordinary costs. The project sometimes can absorb that. Well, in this case, it, it, that wasn't true, but I just point that out because that can sometimes happen. But here, if we, if the assistance wasn't provided by the city, uh, the developer was projecting a yield on cost, which is really just their net operating income divided by how much the project costs. So it's a very simple metric, but it, it is one that's commonly used. So it was about five point three percent. These industrial developers, they wanna see that number be more like six and a half or seven percent, just by way of comparison. So their conclusion is that, look, we, we're not gonna do this project because we can't m- meet our returns. We're, we're gonna, if, if we're gonna, we'll take our dollars and do a project somewhere else where we can actually make those returns. And that's where that need piece comes in, right? If, if you wanna, you don't have to provide it, but if you wanna see something happen on this site, then, then you need to get them to those returns on investment that are gonna make it minimally possible. So, uh, is what would happen then is that, uh, you know, we calculated one point seven six million, that's circled there. That's how much the city could bring, uh, to help solve the gap. And then you can see on the bottom, there, uh, there's the three and a half million dollars in costs we're trying to solve for. But then in the middle are all those grants. I mean, this had, this project had to layer in a whole bunch of grants. Uh, uh, D, the Department of Employment, Economic Development, their county, uh, has, uh, funding for this kind of thing. Uh, Met Council, uh, provided money here, uh, and the county really had two, two grant programs. But together, you know, those dollars plus the TIF, we're able to get to that three and a half million. And that whole package, when we looked at it all together, you know, we, we, we inched up that projected return on investment to six point three percent. Not quite getting to that six and a half percent threshold, but this was done at a time when these yields, you know, about a year and a half ago, where that was pretty acceptable. And, uh, and the developer moved forward, um, under that basis, right? So the, the city was successful in obtaining those grants. They were able to leverage the TIF from that existing district. You know, the project is now under construction, those, those grants and the TIF are all approved. But, you know, it was that process and the city's policies and understanding what the council, you know, wanted to see happen and feeling confident working with the developer that, you know, yep, we wanna see industrial and jobs and tax base. And this site we know has been a problem for a long time. So it was very clear that they wanted to do it. And having the developer come through that process and work through that analysis and work through all the details is really what helped a very, a council that was very, you know, um, uh, not open to providing financial assistance. I mean, I, I would characterize them as, as very cautious around that and hadn't historically done a lot of that, got comfortable with the idea that in this case, yes, uh, we need to do it in order to see what we wanna have happen. And they did. So I think that process and, and, and all the discussions leading up to it is really what, really what helped that one succeed. Questions about that?
Yeah, I, I'd quick.
Sure.
Question. On, as far as securing those other grants from the county and, and Med Council in this case, is that, is that both the developer and city staff working or is it city staff leading that? Or who leads that to make that all happen?
Typically, city staff. Typically city staff. Uh, some grant sources that are available out there do allow for the developer to take the lead in any application. But in either case, it's going to be real close working together because a lot of the information and data that you're going to need to populate those grant applications is probably going to come from work that the developer has done. You know, like they've, they've done the MPCA Response Action Plan, for example, that details all the contamination and, and what is going to be done to remediate it. And so it's a, it's a close working relationship. It truly is a public-private partnership. Um, and both entities need to work together to get those submitted.
Are both entities actually the grantee? I mean, both entities are named as the grantee?
Typically, no. I, I, they're all, they all operate a little bit differently. Oftentimes they'll, uh, go to the city and then there'll need to be an agreement between this. There's an agreement between the grantor and the city. And then the city has to enter into an agreement with the developer to provide the grant in accordance with the agreement with the grantor. But some are different. And, but that's, I think, probably most typical. I don't know Jenny, does that seem like that's?
Uh, most are that way.
Yeah.
And then in those grant agreements under that type of a scenario, are there compliance requirements of the city? Like is the city providing some level of project guarantee or, um, I'm just trying to understand kind of ultimate project risk and when those things are taken on?
Yeah, there, you're, the grant agreement with the agency will lay out what your obligations are. They're not typically too onerous. I mean, fundamentally, a lot of this is, were the grants used to pay for the costs that they were given and you're documenting that, right?
City would have visibility to that anyways.
Exactly. Yep. So you're, you're, you're getting your, um, um, documentation of expenditures from the developer, making sure that's, you know, accurate and is it consistent with the grant? Then you're applying for a draw of the grant funds from the granting agency and that's typically about it. Once it's been spent on a qualifying activity, that is often the end of it. Yep.
Do we have a grant writer on staff or contracted or that'd be an additional cost in the summer?
We don't have one on staff, but we've, we're working with the county and the state right now to sort of get those partnerships in place. So if a grant application comes in, we're well positioned to be able to execute on those grant applications if need be.
We, and we have done, have been a recipient of many grants throughout the years. So it's not a foreign area. It's, would, we, we've received grant funds, so it's.
Typically, city, yeah, the cities, city staff are writing those grants, you know, and city staff that wear other hats typically, right? Your development staff or, you know, other staff that, you know, um, it would be, I don't know of any cities that have a, that employ a full-time grant writer other than maybe like a Minneapolis or something like that.
This is a certain skill set. I just, I assumed that would probably contracted with somebody.
Yeah, I mean, some, there, you're right about that. And, but some of these grants with these agencies are a lot more, um, I'll call it almost administrative, right? I mean, they're not like, you're not having to write with flourishes to convince them of the need, right? You're really just, do you check the boxes? And they'll look at your project and kind of, it's not really a, there's not an art to it, I guess. I mean, I don't want to say anyone can do it, but anyone can kind of do it. So, you know, that's why no one has a specialty person really typically to do that. Yes, sorry.
Me again. I just need to solidify this in my mind because I'm really slow. So how many years of tax forgiveness is this TIF note for Burnsville?
Uh, well, this one, well, this one is a little odd because, um, of the district having already been created. I believe it was a twenty-year district. So it's part of it's determined by the district type. And so, um, districts can be of, of different lengths. So a redevelopment district, for example, it can run for twenty-six years. So you could make a deal that runs for twenty-six years. In this case in Burnsville, I think we had, did I even say on there? I think it was sixteen or seventeen years of increment collections that were left. You know, the district had already, the clock had already started ticking on the district. And so in this case, we were going to run out of time. So, uh, we had like sixteen years here. But it's, it's common to have that go longer for, uh, longer duration districts.
Okay. And then it says TIF note, but it's not, this is where I'm a little bit, I need clarification.
Yep, let's talk about it.
The city of Burnsville is not giving them actual money. They are forgiving their taxes for twenty-six years or whatever. To that amount, is that?
Yeah, what happens is that, yeah, so they, they say, we will give you up to three, or one, in this case, one million seven hundred and sixty thousand over sixteen years, well, with, with interest. You developer have to go out and raise that money yourself. We're not going to give you the money upfront. So they go to a bank or their equity partners or whoever, they have to come up with the one million seven hundred and sixty thousand. And then they typically borrow it. And then what happens is that we don't forgive their taxes, they still pay them. They just get redirected into the tax increment district and the fund. And then we use those dollars to pay down the one point seven million over time. Does that make sense?
It's a reimbursement of.
Of their taxes.
They pay a cost, they pay their taxes, those, those funds are collected by the city. And then the city pays it out to the, the, the developer to reimburse them for costs that they incurred. It's a promise to reimburse them.
To help them pay the loan they took out to cover that gap in the project.
So the loan holder of that one point seven million, is that a secured note to them if it's really based on X increment financing?
It depends how they finance it. I mean, sometimes the, the increment is pledged specifically to a financing institution. And that's, yes, that's their security. Um, sometimes it's not. Sometimes, um, you know, it's just a developer, you know, uh, hoping that they get this money back over time. Um, it just depends on how they decide to finance it, but they have to come up with the money, you don't. And, um, how they do that is kind of up to them. And, and it differs. It can be different. You know? Sometimes the developer will put more equity in a project to cover a gap in exchange for payments of TIF. And not necessarily even have a financing attached to it. So we've seen that happen too. So it really just depends on what that individual developer can or can't do as to what the increment is pledged for. But in any case, uh, even if it is pledged and if they do default, you're still under no obligation to pay that, uh, in financial institution that may have used that as security.
Okay, that's the bottom line.
Yes.
Yeah, because it sure sounded that way, didn't it?
Correct. Any more on that one before we jump ahead? Okay, so a little different project. This one was, uh, is a, a, a market rate rental housing project uh, in Robinsdale, just, uh, still kind of right in their downtown area. Um, there, you know, here was, uh, a site that was to be assembled that had, you know, some, um, you know, vacant, underutilized and substandard buildings on it. Uh, you know, the, the, um, cost to assemble all those, tear them down and build a new building. The, the rents in the market weren't enough to support all of those costs. And so the, the project as market rate housing couldn't get built without city assistance. And so the developer in this case, again, you know, the city had undertaken sort of a redevelopment, uh, uh, um, exercise process, uh, to, to try and identify sites to redevelop. This was one of those. Uh, had policies in place, applications in place. Uh, the developer came forward, went through the same process that I've been talking about and asked the city for assistance. Now, they were asking for four and a half million dollars, which would have been, in this case, would have been about twenty-four years of TIF assistance. And so this gets to the, the timing thing, which I think is important. The district, it would have been, is a redevelopment district and qualified because it's got those substandard buildings. Twenty-six year maximum duration, the developer's request would have meant that the, that the project would be stuck in a district for twenty-four years, which is a long time. And so the benefit of that tax base coming back is a long ways off. Um, now you're getting the project and the housing, uh, and so there are other benefits. And so the question is, okay, well, now what? And so in this case, this one really did rely on, um, you know, looking at that pro forma again and doing that analysis. And, you know, what we, what we all know, uh, from doing this a lot is that a developer in every case will ask for as much as they can possibly get. And many of them are sophisticated enough to know, you know, what their project qual, kind of district their project qualifies for. They know how to calculate increment. And usually what happens is, you know, they magically ask for the very maximum amount that it could possibly generate with really, you know, no other basis, uh, often for some of that rationale. And so, uh, you know, kind of turned out to be the case here. Um, you know, we looked at that pro forma, there were costs to assemble the land, as I said, there were construction costs. You know, all of those things were reasonable. Um, you know, the market rents, this is, uh, there was no, had been no new market rate housing built in Robinsdale, uh, since, you know, probably like the eighties. And so there wasn't a great track record to understand what the market for new luxury rental housing was. And to be able to really substantiate what those rents were going to be, but we want to make sure that, um, we're projecting those high enough. Cause you, you can kind of understand if we, if they come in and show rents that are way lower than what they're going to get, it's going to show that they need more money from you, right? And so part of that analysis is, you know, not only looking at the costs and all those other factors and the financing, but what are they projecting for revenues? And so in this case, we really had to dig in. They had a market study done. We had to review all of that. Are, you know, are they projecting rents high enough or aren't they? And so there was a lot of discussion about that. How are they financing it? What's their developer fee? What are they trying to earn for rate of return? All of that goes into that soup and that analysis. And in this case, this is a lot of information. So don't try to look at all once you be overwhelmed. But on the left side is the, what they came in with, okay? They came in with a project of twenty-nine point eight million dollars. As you can see on the top, those are the, they were proposing to pay for the project with a combination of a first mortgage, which is typical. They wanted that TIF note from the city. They wanted the city to issue a four and a half million dollar TIF note. And, uh, they were going to bring three million dollars of equity of their own dollars to the project. That right there is, is one of those first kind of big red flags, right? You're asking more money from the city than you're bringing to the project yourself. So we kind of went, I don't know about that. And then, uh, they were charging a developer fee of two million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And so as I say, we look at all the costs, I'm just highlighting some of the basic ones here for simplicity sake. But that's seven point six percent of the total development costs. That number probably should be like three percent, especially today with the way costs are for these projects. So quite a bit higher than what would be typical. And that simply contributes, you know, another million and, you know, the dollars of, of showing need that they have there as part of that, um, request. So we looked at that and we said, no, uh, that, and by the way, at the bottom then too, you can see that if that was provided, what would happen? Their return, returns on investment are highlighted there. So in year three, they were projected earning eight point three percent. And this is cash on cash. So this is, at the end of the day, how much cash flow comes out of the project divided by the equity investment that they made. And because the equity investment was so low, the returns on that equity ended up being quite high. That number we typically see more in like the ten percent range. So as we projected forward, remember, we're going to have to pay TIF for twenty-four years here. By year fifteen, they're at fourteen percent. So that tells us right away is a very clear illustration that no, this isn't how we want this to go. Um, we would rather have this look different than that. And so, uh, we think, one, your developer fee is too high. You're not bringing enough equity into the project. We tried to size a TIF amount that would lead to returns on investment that were within what the market would generally see. And that's where this two and a half million number came from. So you plug that in, uh, and then, uh, instead of twenty-four years, we projected that you could repay the, the two and a half million dollars in ten years. So now the project comes out of the district in ten years and you've got that new tax base instead of having to wait twenty-four years. The returns on investment year three, uh, eight point six. And by year fifteen, it's, it's, you know, because there's, there's more equity in here, uh, eleven point five. But again, we're going to be out of the deal in ten years. So, you know, these are, these are more in line with where the market ought to be. This is one of those examples where there was a lot of negotiation about this. Uh, the developer did not agree with our analysis and let us know that regularly. And, uh, we had the conversation with the city, um, but eventually, I mean, they really didn't have a, a leg to stand on here with the numbers that they were showing, showing us. And they relented and, and agreed to go ahead and do the project under those, uh, circumstances. Um, this did not have a look back provision in it, but the project moved forward. It got its financing. Uh, the hundred and fifty-two new market rate units there, uh, and then we, the deal was ten, projected to be ten years of TIF rather than twenty-four. Now, what happened here is that the project, while it was under construction, not even occupied yet, sold, the developer sold it. And sold it for quite a bit more than anyone thought they'd ever be able to get for it. And so probably ended up making more money in those returns that I'm even showing here, but we don't know because we don't have a look back. And, um, but, but the other side of that is that the values, the assessed valuations of apartments in this city increased dramatically as well. So this thing is probably going to come out of the TIF district in like six or seven years instead of ten. Because, you know, the, the projection of increment is more than what was originally, um, thought. So once you're done paying that, the note, you're done, you're done. So you don't, you don't have to keep going beyond that. So then, the hope here is that instead of waiting ten years, they'll be back on the tax rolls, you know, soon. So. That's it for my sort of formal kind of, um, kind of background or education piece, we're going to call it. We want to revisit any of that. Otherwise, the next thing would be sort of jumping into kind of your policy and start talking about that. But anything to close out on, on those examples at all before we jump into that?
On the, that last one, the Burt Town flats, there, there was no, uh, nothing deemed blighted or anything. That seemed like a pretty low threshold to be able to be, uh, eligible for TIF. I mean, there wasn't any, I mean, you said there was a few undesirable properties, but was it more just because there just wasn't the apartments anywhere else since the eighties that were built and the city really wanted that to happen?
Well, I think they wanted the site, the site redeveloped, uh, and they wanted the housing. So there were kind of two reasons. Uh, it did, it did qualify based on the buildings that were there as a redevelopment district. So just briefly, what that is, is that, you know, you have to have, you have, whatever the parcel configuration is, you know, you gotta have, the parcels have to be covered with improvements essentially. So even, you know, buildings, parking lots, and there's a percentage threshold for that. Um, and then if there are buildings there, more than fifty percent of the buildings need to be determined to be substandard. And that's just a code test where, uh, a third party will go in there and determine what code deficiencies exist. And if, um, if those code deficiencies, the cost to remedy those are fifteen?
Fifteen percent.
Okay, fifteen percent of what it would be, cost to build a new building, it can be deemed substandard. And so if that meets that threshold, then it qualifies and then it can be, you know, you can create a district. And this did. There were, um, there were these three buildings that you're, that are shown in the picture. There are two of them are single family homes, which sometimes can be hard to qualify. Uh, the other one was a, um, uh, kind of an old office building. And then there was a, a, a bank parcel there, uh, Citizens Bank that didn't need as much parking as it had. So some of the parking lot was carved out and given to the project, but that was covered with improvements. So it met the test. And it's not a, it's, you, you know, you'd sometimes are surprised, you know, yes, it doesn't have to look like it's falling apart to qualify for a redevelopment TIF district. It's not that high of a bar to get a building to qualify, you know? Um, but there is a test that you gotta go through. And these did do that. Other questions about that? Yes, sir.
Can, um, most, sometimes when these TIF districts go in and you have development, there's public infrastructure cost. Can you tell the, the group how that's factored into the TIF in that equation?
Sure. Yeah. So with, with respect to infrastructure, I mean, that, that can happen in a number of different ways. Often what happens, uh, is that, you know, a project might be required to, you know, as part of its land use approvals process or whatever, install infrastructure improvements, let's just say. Uh, and so sometimes those are on the site, sometimes they're off the site. But you can, uh, if those, if that is a requirement of the approvals of that project, the developer can build those improvements and pay for them. And you can use tax increment financing on that site to offset other costs, right? Essentially trading those investments. So that's one way to get infrastructure built outside of a tax increment district, for example. Um, the, you know, the other way is to, uh, and we've got a project like this right now. We're actually created a tax increment district and did not direct any of the assistance back to the user in that district. But instead are leveraging that increment to issue bonds to pay for a new road adjacent to that tax increment district. So that's another way that you can do it. Um, those aren't the only ways, but those are typically the most common ways. Um, and, and so the benefit, you know, to you is, is, you know, an improvement gets built somewhere near the site or to the site. And you're leveraging TIF. So the developer might not ordinarily be able to pay for that or support that, but because of the TIF assistance, they can. Yeah. Or you can just simply directly, you may have, um, you know, TIF built up in a fund and there are rules around how you use that. But sometimes you can directly take that money and build new infrastructure depending on the circumstances. So you can pay for it directly as well without having necessarily even to borrow. If I left anything out, did I leave anything out? Jenny, Rebecca? Okay. So those are, those are the most common ways. Yeah. And the nice thing there about leveraging the develop, a development is that, you know, you're not having to fund that, right? Um, it's getting paid for with the developer's financing and your future commitment of tax increment. There's no bonds, there's no, you know, um, writing a check. You're, you're, you're using the development to leverage to pay for that. And that's a common thing that happens. Alright, on the policy side. Okay, so, uh, we'll move into the, this will be more discussion. This has been great actually feedback. And I think we're already getting a sense of. this has been great actually, feedback, and I think we're already getting a sense of kind of where you're at with some of this stuff. But you have out there like a, a EDA business subsidy policy and a city business subsidy policy, and I think one other policy that relates to a specific project maybe that you talked about, right?
Oh, I think the Vantage one is the...
It's the general city subsidy policy, but it was drafted when that project was coming in, so that sort of bled into the policy development at the time.
Right, so you've got like different divergent kind of documents out there, and so our thought was that, I think what makes sense and what seems to work well for a lot of cities is to really condense that down into one, what, you know, we'll call it what you want, but kind of like a public financing policy that's going to apply to any type of assistance that you might provide as a city. And I think, you know, there, there isn't, what we found is that there really isn't, I don't think, much of a need to have those be distinct and separate. I mean, there's so much, you know, overlap, and you're really focusing upon kind of high level goals in the policy and then, you know, relying on your process to really get down into the specifics. So the one policy seems to work well. Our thought was, and, and again, you know, we wanted to be efficient with the use of your time and, and the time in developing the policy, so what we thought was, you know, we've taken the existing policy documents, we have obviously a bunch of current best practice information, and then we want to take the feedback from you all this evening and take all of that, and including, some of you may have gotten, I know we got some back, I think we got three of them back, wherever, we, we kind of assigned homework, I don't know if any of you looked at that, I know some, at least three of them or four of them came back. And there's still an opportunity to, you know, some people will rather provide feedback that way or think better that way, I know I'm kind of like that a little bit where if you want to write it down and submit it, but, but whatever we get tonight, whatever we get from that homework, all your current documents, and then our best practice stuff, and really try to draft a, a, a first run at a policy for, on your behalf. And then the thought would be, you know, to bring that back for you to look at and kind of run through, and then see what, how it does or doesn't maybe meet what you had in mind. And so that was sort of what we were thinking. But, but in red there for this evening, I think what the focus, for the rest of the evening hopefully would be, is really to understand what kind of specific things you would want to see go into that policy. What's going to, what's important to you as a community, what, what, you know, what things don't you want to see? Those are all things that are important to talk about. And when we developed these policies, I think we, we found that it's best that we don't get too, we don't want to get too prescriptive in the policy, we want the policy to be flexible enough to provide, we want it to be specific enough to provide guidance for the staff and developers, but not so rigid that the first project that comes through all of a sudden doesn't meet it, right? You know, so that's a balancing act, I recognize, but it typically can work out pretty well in, in a structure that we often see. And this, so the next couple of slides are just a, a structure of what that policy could look like. And then there are some documents that you have, handouts that relate to each one of these that we'll end up ultimately going through, but just, just for now, you know, a lot of times these are laid out with a couple of different sections. And, and just as an example, one of, typically there'd be a purpose and authority section, there's really not a lot to talk about there, I mean, that's really kind of boilerplate, statutory requirements, things of that nature. That can be wordsmith certainly, but we won't need to waste our time here doing that, that can be, you know, kind of wordsmith at a later time. Section two is where, you know, we might lay out the city's objectives for the use of public financing, so what are you hoping to accomplish? And that's red because I think that's where we really want to see feedback from you all tonight. Another section will deal with maybe public financing principles. So those are those best practices that I talked about, you know, they're, they're just kind of like, you know, probably going to use pay-as-you-go assistance as the default method of assistance and not issue bonds to pay for a development project. Just kind of things that I think are probably pretty basic, and so we can really work with staff to put those things in place, and some of those you already have in your existing policy documents, so we would just replicate that, because I think some of that's really good stuff that you already have in there, and doesn't need to be completely discarded. Section four, this gets into what, like the projects that actually qualify for assistance under your policy. Typically that's, you know, divided into, there's certain minimums that have to be met, and again, that's, you know, developer has the financial wherewithal to do this, you know, things that, you know, we don't need to probably spend a lot, we all would probably agree those are good minimum qualifications, but there are another kind of subset of qualifications that are what I would term desired qualifications. If a project does come in asking you for assistance, what kind of things do you want it to have? And that's where feedback to customize your policy to what you want to have happen, I think is important. And then the last couple of sections are really more, I guess I'd call them administrative, so, you know, this will be your statutorily required business subsidy policy as well as, you know, this public financing policy, so we still have to have the statutorily required language in this policy to meet the intent of what that statute requires. So that's what section six is, it just says that, you know, for, for projects that are a business subsidy, you will enter into an agreement for that. And then section seven is where you, it kind of talks about that process that I mentioned. That's really where you're pointing to what the process is going to be and communicating that to everybody that's out there in the development community. So that's, I think, how it could lay out, again, it could change, it doesn't have to be exactly like that, but that's a good, I think, starting point. The next goal I think would be to move into the discussion piece of this, and so I'll try to hopefully stop talking, and we're going to take, you know, all the feedback that you give us, which hopefully is a lot, and try to synthesize that into that draft policy that I mentioned. So I, I've started here with, with, these slides are really in those areas that I highlighted red that are going to go into the policy where we really wanted that specific feedback. This is that first one. You know, city's objective for the use of public financing, and, and really that's about providing feedback about what kind of outcomes you want to achieve if you're going to commit public funds to a project. And then so that we're not all sitting here kind of just trying to make things up, these handouts are some examples that are from other policies that other communities have decided, you know, were important outcomes. So this isn't intended to be, you know, the only ones, but this is just to help, you know, kind of with the discussion, and, and, and a lot of these frankly are, are just fine too. I mean, you could say, yeah, I like this one, or I don't like that one, but just something to help the discussion so we're not kind of coming into it cold. And then for the next two, we have the same thing, we'll just talk through each one of these, collect that feedback, and, and we can start working on the draft, so. With that, I'm going to stop, but I'm sure we, we can talk more if there are questions, but I'd just love to hear from folks about, again, those desired outcomes, what do you want to see happen in Forest Lake? Somebody has to start.
Specifically on, specifically on the desired outcomes, are you on the first page of this handout? I want to make sure.
Uh, yes, uh, yes, it is. The way that mine is stapled together here.
It did staple them in order of the discussion items, so the city objective for use of public financing?
Yep, and that's the one we're on, yep. So it should match the slide title, hopefully.
And goal would be, so, review, identify, maybe even, so is it kind of, where, you're looking for, for the language that's on the page, do we agree, do we object, are there things that are on the page we'd like to see off? Or also a completeness check, are there other requirements that we aren't seeing that maybe we would want to consider?
Yep, absolutely, yep. And, and also really think about, you know, don't focus too hard on the, I mean, the page is there to help us, but, and then these are, you know, probably are probably going to come up with some of these, but if, just kind of back up and think about, you know, if you're going to provide public funds in Forest Lake, you know, what do you want to see happen as a result? You know, and, and I think everybody's got an idea, it doesn't have to get into the minutia of it, but even, and we can translate whatever you say too into, into, that's kind of what's happened here too, it's, you know, we'd like to see, if we're going to use public money, we want to see this, 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 and this happen, that's kind of what, kind of what
Maybe the first one, maybe the easy question first is, is there anything that anyone sees on here that you just think isn't a fit? Like, anything that you would either language-wise not be comfortable with, or topic, or it just doesn't seem to fit the nature of Forest Lake?
Well, there's quite a few on here, is it goal, I mean, how broad do you have something like this?
Because like, there are policies that have all of these in them, you know, and there are some that have a shorter list. So there's no, you know, I don't want, you don't have to feel, you know, kind of hemmed in by what's here either too. And, and, and like I said, I think whatever, whatever kind of feedback we take, we'll also try to wordsmith that in a way that isn't overly restrictive as well, and just know that that, when you see these sort of regurgitated back to you, the, the goal is to have language in here that doesn't box you into a typical, or a certain kind of thing. And so we would maybe reword it a little bit, but yeah, that's, that's generally the idea, yep.
I mean, there's a lot of great ones on here, I guess the four that popped off the page to me were numbers one, two, five, and six, or bullets one, two, five, and six.
As in, being of higher priority or of, yeah?
Yeah.
Is there a prioritization where we would, I mean, do you see cities get to a level of primary prioritization and secondary prioritization, or is it more of a intended to be broader laundry list?
Yeah, I think in this section, and it's, I know it's kind of nuanced a little bit, but this is more broad about if we're going to use public money, what do we want to have happen? There are sections, when you get into what are the desired project qualifications that you want to see, that is where we often see, these are things I want to see in projects, right? I want solar on the roof, I want to see, you know, affordable housing, I want to see, you know, whatever your, you know, project-specific thing would fit into a desired qualification, we will talk about that. So that would be the more project-specific, this is more high-level, you know, like, like you can see in here, like, you know, two, two is probably the most, the least, you know, controversial statement ever, right? We want to expand and diversify the local economy and tax base, right? That's a broad objective if you're going to use public money, it isn't project-specific. You can drill down into projects on that topic, but, but generally it's, you know, that's a high-level statement, and that's kind of where these live, is that, that higher level.
So, so one that I, I don't see on here, and maybe I'm missing it, but Patrick asked the question about infrastructure and that, you know, utilities and that, trying to maybe tie that somehow to a, a new development where we're, we're underfunded here, and so if that's some way to, to help offset some of the costs for that actual project and some of the things that we're lacking already.
Yeah, it's a great one, and, and I know that that's an issue, I, I didn't add it, not intentionally, but again, it's not an exhaustive list, so that's great. If that's a, and I have heard that, your staff has said that, I know it's a priority, and so I think that's a, that's a great one to include, that you're leveraging any public assistance to achieve in, infrastructure investment in the city, something like that, right?
And then the one, one that I, I think would be tough to quantify is the, because I don't even know if the city has these goals, and maybe it's not tied to that, furthers diversity, equity, inclusion goals. Does the city have that in place? So I, I think that would be hard to, at this point, not, although I agree it'd be nice to include all there, have that happen, but to actually put that down as a policy might be a little difficult to quantify, I guess.
It can be, yeah, and a lot of, of them don't, it's, it's less common that those are in there, but there has been recently a lot more questions about that, and so it's on the list, you know, but doesn't mean you have to include it. It's a, and it, it often gets into issues of contracting and, and a lot more depth than many cities often go to with some of these projects, so.
In that situation where if we don't have defined goals, and if we are maybe not as prescribed, would it be acceptable to just say it furthers diversity, equity, and inclusion and not point to something that would be quantifiable? Or does everything kind of need to, at this point, have some level of quantification?
I don't, I don't think so, I mean, there's definitely, in, in a lot of these policies, softer language around that, and, and that's really the intent, right? I mean, it, it could be another thing that when you go back to look at a project and say, how is it meeting our, our policies, that's just one more, you know, reason why it does. Not, no project is going to check all these boxes, you know, it just isn't. And, but, because of how different they all are, but, so yeah, I mean, it's just, it would be another, yeah, a softer statement would make sense.
I agree, we should include something like that in there, and if we don't have a policy, probably should establish one, you know, I mean. Or could, or to even, if we maybe didn't want to get to the point of having to quantify a goal, but it's just a broad. It's at least a statement, yeah, I mean, but not saying we need to have a, you know, maybe some of them have, it has to be a, you know, female-owned developer or a, you know, whatever, BIPOC this, whatever, you know, certain requirements, I don't know if that's what some of the others are, being that granular or not.
Yeah, it can go.
Could be, but I'm saying, that's what, we're not saying we're going to be that granular, but.
Are you, are you saying be broader?
Be broader, what you're saying, yeah, but I'm assuming like maybe some, some other objectives in other areas may, may choose to do that.
Jenny, I think you would have.
I agree, it should stay in because if we're going to go after any grant writing, and I'm involved in a lot of grant applications, that is becoming more and more of a focus, and they want more and more quantifiable results. So, I'm all for leaving it in.
Good point. One of...
Very diverse.
Yeah.
Anything else specifically on that topic? I have a comment, but it's going to take us in a slightly different direction. One of the, so one of the points is to increase housing choice, and I know a lot of TIF projects are specifically around, you know, providing affordable housing or providing workforce-type housing. We have a, you know, we have done TIF on a number of different types of housing projects, and I commonly say that we have a goal of providing an assortment of housing options. Having that increased housing choice, does that, is that a, I, I read that as being a broader, that we would consider both TIF projects for market rate type developments as well as some sort of an affordable option. I think that's in, more in line with what our overall housing goals are, but just want to make sure I'm reading that right.
Yeah, I mean, that broad statement is exactly what you said. Then, then some cities will go even, kind of like, you know, on, on the DEI one, I mean, you can go as, as detailed on that as you want, but, you know, it's kind of whatever housing choice means to you, you know, like for example, in Robinsdale, it meant putting in market rate affordable hous, or market rate rental housing, right? That's what they wanted to see, that, that choice, that was a new choice, that didn't exist. So I think the intention is that it's broad, I mean, it could be townhouses, it could be senior housing, it could be assisted living, it could be anything really. And then if you want, you can get as prescriptive as you want around the housing goal specifically in some of the desired qualifications or some of the minimums, depending on what you want to see as a, as a community, you know. So, yeah, some have, some have prioritized, you know, higher-end luxury housing because that, that was a product that didn't exist in their communities. Some cities say, no, we want, we want to prioritize affordable housing because, you know, we, all we have is, is high-end housing. So it just really depends on where you want to be as a community. And you can als, always leave it, you know, vague here too, I don't, I don't mean to say vague, but I mean, you don't have to say what increasing housing choice means necessarily, you know, you, as long as it, is, is, a project comes before you and you're like, yes, is this, is this increasing housing choice in our city? It is, and we think therefore it meets our policy, and it's something we want to assist.
I like that broader approach, just from a point of feedback, because it, it allows a timelessness of the policy, but it allows us to adjust to what's happening with housing, and we've seen, you know, things, you know, dip and different areas of the market develop at different speeds, and so sometimes we might be looking to promote a certain type of housing, and then five years later that might change, and this would allow, if I'm reading it right, to all be adopted under the same policy.
That's kind of the idea, yeah, to have a policy that can continue to survive over time, it isn't too, like I say, too specific because of those, sorry, because of those reasons that, that you mentioned, yeah.
Any other points of feedback? Talking a little bit about what's on the page, any points of feedback of things that are not on the page that we might also want to include? Suggested new language? I think it's a pretty comprehensive list, I would, I would like us to have a broader, knowing that we can apply the policy to individual project parameters, I would encourage us and support a broader policy than something that's really prescriptive. But also I'm looking for something that's a little bit more timeless that we're not going to tweak. I think, once you start tweaking policy, you're kind of, I'd rather do that at the project level rather than change policy, but that's my personal touch. Any other, I guess, thoughts on that particular point, or anything else?
Point number one, I, I mean, I like that one, and it refers to the goals and visions established by the city, which would just lead me to believe that you would then define what those goals and visions are of the city. So like increasing visitation or expanding, those seem like the goal, you know, goals and visions, and increasing or expanding diversity, equity, inclusion seem like some, some goals and visions that you could, could be the sub-bullets underneath some of them.
Yeah, you can get specific on those, if, if you leave it open like this to, both ways work, right? But like, in this case, you know, if you, this was established, you know, three years ago, and then later on comes your downtown plan, you know, you wouldn't need to, this would, you know, say that, yeah, we, we created this downtown plan, so that's what we want to see happen. That's, our policy says that we want to support our plans, and so, you know, it wouldn't need to necessarily change because of that, just as an example. Is, and this was in the homework, just before we, and well, it sounds like we're kind of ready to move on to the next one, which is great, and this is good feedback. The homework talked about, is there, is there anything that you just don't want to provide public financing for? Because I think that's as important almost as the, what do you want to provide question? Is there any, I don't know all the issues out there, but I mean, is there anything that you just, we're never gonna provide any assistance for that? What would that be?
How about some examples of common that list items?
Well.
Industries, I mean, I mean. We're not gonna probably support pornography or, I mean, like, maybe, maybe we are. Cannabis, I, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, there you go, that's a good one. You know, some, sometimes into the, into the housing goals, you know, I mean, there, there might be certain housing types you just don't want to provide assistance for. You know, you know, I'm trying to think of other examples. They're often, you know, city-specific. You know, retail sometimes is one that, that shows up because, you know, that's market-driven, and you can't, it's hard to make retail work somewhere, you know, so sometimes that makes the list. But, yeah, unless there's, if, if there's not some burning immediately thing coming to your mind, then there probably isn't something that you need to add. We, when we ask that question, it's usually, this is the thing, or, or there isn't one, so, you know.
We've had those issues with, you know, like, the massage place, the sex toy place, I mean, like, probably not entertain those again.
I kind of go back, though, I kind of go back to that point, though, I kind of like, we have zoning and other things in place that, I don't know.
There's things in place to prevent that, you're saying?
You've seen our success on that. I, I don't know, I, it's, it's hard to.
If you leave it broad enough, you can do it on an individual case-by-case basis versus pointing down so small and then you're stuck. When it's wide open, I would be for making it as open as possible.
Is this where some communities would say, we won't provide this for, I don't know, a national chain, for example? Or we won't provide this for?
Yep, that's, that, yep.
I'm not suggesting that's right for Forest Lake, but.
Those are all, yeah, it's why you never, because they're all so city-specific, you know, that there's not like a common theme out there that, that makes that list. And so if there isn't one, that's totally fine, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we weren't missing something in the.
A little bit of that point, I always like to read these up, if I'm, you know, how's the community going to read our policy? Promotion of quality urban architectural design, or a gateway community, we, you know, I think we think of ourselves as being kind of the gateway to the metro. There are parts of our community that are incredibly rural, and so maybe that particular word, urban, doesn't always strike us. And maybe there are parts that, potential projects that urban might not actually be the goal. It might be more preserving some of our rural character, and so maybe that doesn't necessarily fit as a call-out. I would say improved architectural design and aesthetic elements are important, but.
I was thinking that, too, like, just, and didn't know if it'd be too specific to like the downtown redevelopment, but this ensuring that whatever that development would meet the aesthetics of, you know, the look and feel, whatever we call that, of, that it blends with the look and feel of the downtown area.
And sometimes, and I, I, again, this is a very boilerplate list here, it wasn't intended to be proposed for your list necessarily, but I think to that point, I think it's a good point, you want this to be in the language that you're comfortable having it. Sometimes, too, and I don't, I haven't even gotten on this path with, with the staff yet, but if you have, a lot of cities have architectural standards and design standards, you know, those plans, call-out design standards, you can simply say that, you know, it needs to meet whatever city design standard that exists out there, you know. The Burnsville example that I, that I referenced, they have an in-code that they've got, they've defined their architectural requirements as good, better, and best, for example. And so right in the policy, we said that, that any project needs to be better or best, by way of example. I don't know if there's a corollary for your codes and ordinances, but we could, working with staff, find something that makes sense. If you like that, I, as a, as a concept, put the right language in there that fits Forest Lake, I think is what we would propose.
But, but also keep in mind, too, that no matter what the application is, they still have a long process of this test that they really go through to make it work or not work.
Right.
It doesn't matter what, what, you know, what, what, I, I mean, it does matter, but you can't just say, well, we're gonna want this particular building standard, and it still doesn't meet the test to, to even qualify.
Right, it's all, it's got to work together, right? And the important thing to know, too, is that you, not, it's not like land use applications where you've got pretty wide discretion about providing or not providing assistance, right? So just because you say something in here, and I don't, Jenny might be kicking me under the table here, but I, you could say no for basically on, almost any reason that you want, right? I mean, is there any?
No, and, and, it, it is typical to include in the policy, and you might have that in here already, that just meeting the criteria doesn't mean they're automatically entitled to assistance, that you ultimately make the decision not to assist the project.
That's what I meant by, it's already a fairly broad policy, you know, the way, even without this full list, so.
It can provide a good, the words in this part of the policy, though, can provide a good conversation point, so a staff's having conver- it's a good conversation prompt. One thing that comes to mind that I've, that I've thought about, projects that we've liked or projects that the community has liked downtown and what they haven't liked downtown in particular, things that enhance or promote or preserve our history, our character, seem to have been more, you know, highly accepted. I think, I think in particular about some of what's happened at the Hual site and that the, you know, the community has liked that they're preserving some of that character. I, I don't want us to seem like we're deep into a preservation district, but I think a project that is going to, you know, promote our history might have broader public appeal and might be worth having as just maybe a preference or a, will score better than something that looks like it could be in Hugo or White Bear Lake or Stillwater or any other community.
Yep, that makes sense. And you, you still have the flexibility on a project-by-project basis to require or ask for something special like that, right? You could say, well, in this site, we really need this, so go back developer and, and make sure you incorporate whatever that is, and they can, they can do that.
And industry, you know, industrial district, that's gonna make less sense than it's going to make downtown and up, so. Maybe getting into too much detail, but. Anything else on, as far as like words that might be missing or things, concepts that we might want to highlight more broadly?
Nope, we're good on that one? I'll just keep pressing ahead there in interest of time. So the next one, this is, again, recall, this is the, you know, well, projects that qualify for assistance will have that basic kind of language in there about minimum qualifications, but, you know, are there, for a specific project, things that you would want that project to include? Again, this is a, you know, kind of a, a generic list here on the, on the second page, one that says, desired qualifications for public financing. You know, this is where some of your economic development goals start showing up, right? You know, what, what are you trying to achieve? Is it, is it jobs, is it, you know, housing? You know, infrastructure could again go in here, right? And I think it probably should, given the discussion that we've already had. Those are the kind of thoughts here, and so, so these are taken from different policies. You know, some cities are highly focused on, on bringing higher-paying and more job-dense users to their cities, you know, as a primary economic development strategy, while others are really just focused on housing, for example. And so, and, and some are doing a little bit of everything. So, so again, the list here isn't intended to be, you know, you know, limited to this or all of this. It's just kind of what, kind of what your thoughts are about it.
Just open it up, any thoughts, things that jumped out? I think one of the points that, I think one of the points that stands out to me is, and, and I'm not sure I'm, I know where, I'm not sure I'm decided on where I, where I sit, but I think it's worth discussion on what's our level of investment from the city versus, the, the very first line, like, what is, and for a, a project, the level of, are we looking to be the catalyst? Or are we looking to be the support? Are we in the driver's seat, or are we sitting in the backseat as support? I think that's important. If we have a decis-, if, if there is an appetite for a certain position, it'd be good to articulate it. If truly it's project by project, then probably not worth having in the plan, and maybe part of just what we would want to talk about is our planned use. How, and to me, that kind of gets at, how aggressive do we plan to be? Which might, you know, some of the conversation we've had already around us providing, you know, support staff and assistance on some, you know, grant proceeds. I think that all kind of speaks to us presenting what is our appetite. And again, maybe that's more situational, and maybe we don't want to put that into a policy, but something to think about.
I don't, I haven't seen anything that I would pull from this, for sure.
Is it a good list? Any edits? Things you'd take off or add?
We'll make a note to add one about infrastructure. I think I, I saw heads nodding, but I, I think that seems like a consistent theme. Oh, there it's on there, yeah. But we, I think we probably, we can make that more specific and obvious and, you know, put it up the list higher and call it out maybe a little more, and get a little more background about that, too. But yeah, it's, you know. No other thoughts about that? It won't be the last chance that you have to look at this, so, but I want to make sure we're.
It speaks to the quality of your draft, so, well done.
Thank you. The, the last one here, and maybe this is a little easier, is that, one of the things that, as I said, the, the statute requires you to do with a business subsidy policy is to identify a specific wage floor that you're gonna list in, in your policy. And it can be a number, or it can be a formula, it just has to be stated in there. Right now, your policies, I think, talk about 150% of federal minimum wage. So what this handout has on a table here is just what those wage levels are at typical, different index levels. Sometimes, you know, the state minimum wage will be indexed, sometimes it's a federal minimum. It really just depends on what you want to see. So right now, the federal minimum, 725, your policy would mean that the wage floor, so this is, if a project qualifies as a, as a business subsidy, that when you provide assistance, then, then these factors apply. And so what you'd be having then is a business subsidy agreement that for whatever the number of jobs that you specify they need to create, the wage floor would have to be at least where, where your policy is. You can deviate from that if there's a reason to do so, and you just need to, you know, document that fact if you decide to do that. But the policy has to have a floor in it. So we can leave it the way it is, you can have 150% of minimum, a minimum for federal, or you can look at some other amount. The point of that table there is just to give you a sense of what those different amounts would look like in terms of an hourly wage.
If we're considering this policy to cover, and if one of our goals is to attract entertainment restaurants, businesses that typically are at very close to minimum, is the guidance recommendation that we set that. I mean, my concern, I, I'd love to see that be higher, but also from a practical standpoint, that's not the case with some of those industries, and I'm personally okay with us contemplating that as part of the TIF footprint in particular.
Yeah, then, I mean, in that, you can, you can set a, a lower threshold with the idea that for projects, if you're assisting a project whose primary public benefit is to, you know, provide good jobs and tax base, right? You can have a higher standard in there.
That could be project-specific.
And should have a high, probably have a higher standard in there. If, even if you set it at a low threshold and you have a, a, a project that has a lot of service-related jobs in it, and you, and you, and there's a reason why you want to have it, you always have the option to waive that wage floor. And I think that's just documented, public hearing and documenting that, right?
Right, right, yeah. You, you, you have to have other public policy reasons for providing the assistance.
Yes.
But, you know, that could be consistent with your goals, you know, like if, if recruiting restaurants is a goal.
Thoughts, what about market conditions like around us, so that if we want to attract, versus maybe they're considering Hugo or somewhere near us? Do we know, or do you, do you know?
Do you mean, like, how, how would it, how does it affect your competitiveness in terms of attracting, yeah? I mean, if, if that's a concern, I guess I would have that floor be at a lower number. I mean, the, the federal, the 150% of federal minimum is, you know, 1088, I mean, that's, that's pretty low, right? So if you were concerned about not wanting it to be too high, you could stay with your current policy, recognizing that, you know, the goal is to have it be higher. If, if it became an issue of competitiveness, you, again, still have that option if you choose to do so to waive that requirement. I don't, I don't, I don't often see site selectors and businesses looking to locate, using this as a way to try to, you know, compare communities to one another. It's typically, because we're competing nationally, more about taxation and wage costs than it is about, I mean, that they're too high. That the market rate of wages is much higher here broadly than it is in some other part of the country, for example. That's typically what we hear, so not about what you're, necessarily what your policy says. If that, I don't know if that's helpful, but.
I was just gonna say, and I don't know of all of the surrounding communities, but I do know a few of your neighboring communities use the 150 as their, their floor. For what that's worth.
And it does not have to be, it, that is a, it, it is not the case that it applies to all jobs within that business. You set a number of jobs that they are required to meet at that wage level. So, like, even in the restaurant situation, you might have, like, a manager who meets that higher wage goal. And so then you set your job goal as one job at that 150 or 200. So you, you know, there are ways to work with it, even if you have the higher standard, there are ways to.
And it's all of the jobs within the district, right? So the restaurant's not gonna likely be the only provide, job provider of the district, maybe, but it's all of them, right? It's a kind of a, what does the district provide? Is that how it's looked at?
No, if your policy doesn't state a number of jobs that have to be created, then you can specify any number within that business subsidy agreement.
They may, a, a business may plan to have 50 jobs, but the agreement that you make with them that you have to make by state statute might say, to Jenny's point, you only need to create one, and it has to be at that wage level. And once they've done that, they've met the requirement. And so there is brought pretty broad flexibility on how to apply that.
Well, and the rest of it's gotta be market-driven, too. I mean, is, look at the wages that are paying at McDonald's insofar now.
Right.
I mean, it's a really, these numbers are really low.
Compared to that, yeah, I would agree that, yes, I mean, that's, so I, it's a very, so keeping it at the 150 really is gonna give you the flexibility. And in, in your desired qualifications, I mean, we're leaving in some of the things that talk about, you know, higher-paying jobs and things like that. So you, it's stated as, yes, our floor is this, but we would like to see, you know, something different as a desired qualification and outcome, so. Yeah, and then, and then the rest of that section will, will have, you know, the language that's there, kind of some basic statutory provisions that need to be included, and those, those are bulleted out there. But then, it really, the big feedback here was about those wages, so if it's 150, we'll leave it at 150, and, and that'll help fill out that section.
I see heads nodding, any objections or other, go ahead, Jenny?
I just have a question. I assume then this would not apply to developers, their labors or subcontractors?
Correct, now, yeah, and it only applies when assistance is actually considered a business subsidy. So that's another thing that we really haven't talked much about, but there are 23 or 24 exceptions in the statute to reasons why something wouldn't be a business subsidy. So you could give, housing is one of them, right? So the, one of the big ones is housing. Any housing project of any kind, whether it's affordable, market rate, anything, doesn't matter, simply, this, the business subsidy statute just simply doesn't apply. And we wouldn't be applying any of this wage stuff to those projects. There are exceptions for redevelopment as well, it's a kind of a math test about the cost of the land and how much you had to put into it against its current assessed value, and, and if you can meet that threshold, you can meet the redevelopment test, and the business subsidy statute doesn't apply. So there's lots of ways, you know, it's usually only for a project where you're, you know, providing, a lot of times it's really just like, almost like greenfield industrial development is where you see a lot of these provisions apply, or some other kind of commercial project that, you know, you're providing some dollars for. So probably, honestly, like, I, I think probably 90% of the projects that you undertake, you may not even, the statute may not apply, but, but again, the policy and the, and the ideas in the policy would apply, and the standards that you're treating it with would apply, right? Yeah, so with, I mean, that, that's, thank you, this has been great feedback, and I think gives us a lot to work on, to put a draft together. That's kind of the end of our sort of formal. of formal discussion piece, but obviously certainly happy to go answer any more questions or, or go through any more of this if you want. But thank you.
Mark, if you don't mind, I, I, I just have a comment. I mean, this has been the best explanation on all this works for me, for sure, for sure, that I've ever heard. And, you know, we've heard several explanations over the years and, and this one by far has been the best. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Very well said. Thank you.
A question, can you think of, and I work, you work with cities throughout the metro, can you think of a specific city that's 20,000 population or greater that's absolutely said, we're not gonna do it in public financing? Are there any out there or is everyone basically doing this? Just kind of the, the game we're in right now?
I don't know, Crystal, maybe. They're not 20,000, I don't think. They, and even they have done stuff. You know, we're, are, there aren't, there, there are always some, a project that, that, that cities will ultimately want to do where there's, it, it has to be enough of a priority. I can't think of one that's just, just said, we're not doing any, do you know of any that just?
Not, not, like, nothing at all, but like, I, I know Stearns County says, we won't use abatement for anything except industrial. That's, they have, they have a very limited po, you know, policy about what they'll do. And, and I, I know there are cities too who will say, we will not use it for anything other than affordable housing, you know, in terms of the housing assistance. They might use it for other, you know, different tools for different purposes, but they'll only assist affordable housing. So you, you see that kind of thing, but not a blanket.
Woodbury is one that, that comes to mind. They, you know, they, they typically will not even entertain the idea of doing tax increment, but they did do a district here a few years back for a redevelopment project that was gonna eliminate a problem hotel property, for example. That it was, it was a huge issue for the community. The project, the project came along and, and. Everybody has, every city has one of those, or more than one of those. But, but they, they did create a district because it, really almost only because it was gonna result in the elimination of that hotel property. But beyond that, they're typically just, you know, and it's, it's, a lot of times it's where cities are, are sort of like, well, you know, and I'm not talking about Woodbury when I say this, but they kind of take the decision that, well, hey, everything's perfect here, why would we need to do anything? And there's some validity to that in some instances, but I think that there is also an opportunity to, you know, there's, you can let things just happen or you can help shape how they happen. And so that's, a lot of cities even where things are just peachy, still use their tools to help shape things in a way that they want to see the outcomes actually occur. So it just depends. But yeah, everywhere is at least, there's always a threshold where, yep, we want that project, but, you know, maybe not these other ones, so.
Helpful. Other questions, comments?
Mayor Ben, if I might, members of the council EDA, I know that Jason threw a lot of information at a lot of you tonight, so this was your first kind of big tip 101. Those three pages, if you don't feel like you've got enough time to digest them tomorrow, Friday, you're thinking, oh man, you know, I really have some thoughts more on this. Both Dan and I are willing, just pick up the phone call, give us a call. We'd be happy to kind of talk through anything you're thinking of and we'll note that and help provide that to others as part of our future ongoing discussions of this policy development.
And I would add that written feedback too, if you, we'd still be happy to take that. And then, of course, like, as I said, well, you know, the draft, the policy that we try to put together, working with staff, it'll be a draft and you'll have an opportunity to still, you know, wordsmith or, or make changes before, obviously would be finalized. What I didn't talk about is when ultimately that happens, that needs to be approved with a public hearing. And then that's, that's done. I don't know what we need to do to kind of replace the old policies. I don't, if it's just a matter of how the resolution is written, that we just kind of.
Right, or you could title it amended and restated, but I think handling it in the resolution would be sufficient.
Very good. Does this become, who adopts a policy? I mean, typically in this type, we've taken the approach of, you know, certainly at least the EDA, you know, is part of the process and certainly, but is it a council approval? Is it EDA and council approval? Is it the EDA's policy? Who, where, I know our EDA authorities are quite broad in Forest Lake.
I, I think what Ellers is recommending, and I would agree with this, is that it's, it's the same policy and it's adopted by both.
Both bodies.
And both would be referenced, yeah.
Yeah, different, different tools are gonna be administered through, you know, one or the other.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments, feedback? Staff, anything else you need from us tonight? Perfect.
Thank you. This has been incredibly helpful. I hope you're feeling better Rebecca. Glad you're here.
I'm feeling significantly better, but I still have a little enough of a tickle that.
Understood.
I don't want to be disruptive, so my apologies.
Thank you all. It's, this has been an incredibly productive evening and helpful. Council, we are, so we are going to move into a closed session, which is the other portion of our agenda this evening. EDA members, we love that you were here tonight and that we were able to have this joint session and look forward to picking up the conversation with you. And does somebody want to move us into?
Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, we're ready for a motion for a closed session.
Okay, I move to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.05, subchapter 3, C3, to develop or consider offers or counter offers of the purchase or sale of real or personal property of property identification numbers are 0803221130173 and 0803221130123 and 0803221130168 and 0803221130166 and 0803221130160 and 0803221130119. The closed session will be held in the Forest Lake conference room. It will commence immediately. Once the closed session is completed, the city council will reconvene. The open meeting portion of the council chambers. Once back in section, in session, the council will adjourn the regular scheduled council meeting.
All second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and we're in closed session. Thank you, everyone.